Twenty twenty-five at seven P M. And the city council meeting of the city of Avon Lake is now in session. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Gentry, please lead us in the pledge.
To the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mrs. Ross, Mrs. Ross Maron, please call the roll.
Mr. Arnold, Mrs. Fenderbosh, Ms. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Koss.
Here.
Mr. Shamir.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Zuber.
Here.
Mayor Spetzl.
Here.
Law Director Ebert.
Here.
Public Works Director Litzkowitz.
Here.
Finance Director Crossy.
Here.
Are there any objections to Mr. Arnold or Mrs. Fenderbosh not being here this evening? Mr. Arnold is on vacation with his family, and Mrs. Fenderbosh, the council president, is ill. Seeing none. Moving on. To the approval of the minutes, the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, city council meetings. Are there any additions or deletions to these minutes? If not, these minutes will stand as prepared and published. Seeing none. They will stand. Correspondence. Mrs. Ross Maron, have we received any correspondence?
I don't have any correspondence to report. Thank you.
Has any other members of the administration or city council received any correspondence? Seeing none. We'll move on to reports. The first report is from Mayor Spetzl. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Got a few items here. The first one I want to acknowledge them are our firefighters. Internally, when certain incidences happen, where they go above and beyond, they're recognized, and I want to read one that came in. And actually, the actions occurred on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The fire department responded to a medical call for a sixty-seven-year-old male who was found at home in full cardiac arrest. Sergeant Ludwig of the Avon Lake Police Department arrived and began CPR. Upon arrival, the members began administering life-saving advanced cardiac care. The outstanding care rendered allowed the male patient to have restoration of a pulse upon transfer to the hospital. Care continued, and he ended up making a full recovery. The care provided by Avon Lake firefighters, paramedics, the police department, and continued care by hospital staff led to a successful outcome. In other words, this man's life was saved by the care of our police and fire officials. So I want to recognize the following individuals who were on that call, who did exemplary job in saving this gentleman's life. Lieutenant Brian Gillis, firefighter John Nikle, firefighter Richard Freiger, firefighter Michael Perz, and firefighter Ben Koal. Each of these individuals was involved in that call and was responsible for that, saving that man's life. So I just wanted to recognize them first and foremost. You'll note, one of the persons I mentioned there was firefighter John Nikle. Firefighter John Nikle is officially retired as of seven A M. this morning, and that'll be on, I believe, the agenda here. I just want to say a couple of words about John. So John was hired by Avon Lake on October fourteenth, nineteen ninety-seven. He gave twenty-seven years of service to the fire department. He worked as an acting lieutenant on many occasions due to his seniority. He served in various roles. He was an active member of the union and was also a union president, and he was also a very active member of the West Shore Critical Incident Response Team. That's a team that goes out to other public safety agencies when they have a critical incident and helps the council, other public safety officials, when they deal with some trauma or a particularly bad incident. And so we want to thank John for his time with the city. He impacted a lot of lives positively, so I just want to say congratulations to him, and I hope he enjoys his retirement. Next item I have is a update on Alps. We had a planning commission meeting on January seventh. At that planning commission meeting, the commission approved phase-two plans for that. Phase-two plans include site improvements, the type of equipment that's going to be in place, as well as lighting and various other items. So that's going to be going to Councilman Shamir's committee later this month with a request to go out for bidding for the contract to install this equipment and do the work. And we're going to be putting an update. If it's not on our website, we're going to be providing an update on the Alps on our website either today or coming up the next couple of days. Quickly, also wanted to note the implosion air quality update. I received a call today from Verdantis. Verdantis did air quality monitoring of the site, as well as A.L.R. did that. According to Verdantis, there's been, they have seen nothing in the preliminary results that would indicate any type of public health threat. They also stated that they're still evaluating all the data, but preliminary results of the areas in which air quality monitors were placed show dust particulates were less than the national ambient air quality standards, thus very favorable. Real-time data, which was collected at the time of the implosion, was tracked during, I'm sorry, before, during, and after the implosion. And it actually showed that on the day of the implosion, there were several monitoring stations that the results were actually less than they were two days prior to the implosion. The air quality monitors were set up in high receptor areas. We had one set up at each of two schools, and we also had one set up Beach Park Tower. And again, all those showed very favorable results. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. Since the results came into Verdantis today, they're going to be writing a summary, a summary and presenting that to us. I'll forward that to council as soon as I receive it, and we'll also put it out on our website immediately upon our receipt. So I just want to give you that quick update as well. The other thing I wanted to address is we have been getting a lot of questions and concerns, at least I have, I believe my colleagues on council have as well, about the council meeting and public comments that have come in. People wondering what is, what is happening at our council meeting. So I have a statement that I wanted to read to everybody, and if you couldn't indulge me for a few minutes here. "The city of Avon Lake is committed to responding to public records requests promptly and diligently, ensuring transparency and supporting citizens and exercising their First Amendment rights. In twenty twenty-three, we created a new records clerk position to further enhance our ability to manage and fulfill public records requests efficiently. Unfortunately, Mr. Gerald Phillips and Mr. William Zimmerman have made it their mission to hinder the city's ability to provide quality services through an overwhelming number of public records requests and frivolous lawsuits. In twenty twenty-four alone, they submitted over one hundred record requests. Between late October and late December twenty twenty-four, our records clerk dedicated a hundred and three hours to responding to these requests. This time-consuming effort is only a fraction of the significant resources expended by employees, including myself and other department heads, to comply with excessively broad requests, some of which resulted in the generation of tens of thousands of documents. Mr. Phillips and Mr. Zimmerman have openly stated their intent to sue the city as frequently as possible. In twenty twenty-four, they have filed three lawsuits against the city and have publicly threatened additional lawsuits in twenty twenty-five. The city will vigorously defend these actions and explore all legal options to safeguard its ability to deliver high-quality services while protecting taxpayer dollars from unnecessary waste. At each council meeting, these individuals make false and baseless allegations, displaying open disdain and disrespect towards council members, the administration, and other residents. Their actions have significantly disrupted the ability of city council and the administration to focus on their essential work of our community. While Avon Lake values healthy debate and encourages residents to express their opinions, it is critical to maintain respectful and constructive dialogue. Historically, disagreements over city policies and decisions have been voiced in a dignified and productive manner, and we encourage all residents to continue participating in this way, undeterred by the negativity created by these individuals. Despite these challenges, the city council and the mayor, myself, remain steadfast in our commitment to uphold serving Avon Lake residents. We will continue to prioritize the prudent use of tax dollars, uphold transparency, and deliver the excellent services that our community deserves." And that will end my report, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions for the mayor? Mr. Shamir?
Mr. Mayor, do we have a date when Verdantis will submit the report, at least a preliminary report with their, with the map of locations and the preliminary results of their sampling?
They just got their results back, the data from their lab results today. He didn't give me a timeframe. I would assume it would be a few days for him to get that.
Thank you.
And just a quick update, since you mentioned Verdantis, Steve Gross has been our, our main employee that has done our work here. He has retired from Verdantis. However, he is staying on board strictly for Avon Lake's project. So he's going to maintain his relationship with Verdantis for this project, but he's otherwise retired. So there could be a slight delay. He's got a new employee working with him who'll be brought up to speed.
If it's okay, if I can just get a copy of the map showing the location of monitoring stations, I would greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, I can get that to you right away.
Thank you.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment and a question. I concur with your statement with regards to the public records requests and the burden it has placed on our employees. I think that we all understand that public records requests are one of the great, one of the things that makes this country great. But at the same time, the excess burden that's been placed on our city hall, rank-and-file employees, in my opinion, has been excessive and has taken away from a number of the jobs and the opportunities and things that need to be done on a day-to-day basis. So I concur with your statement. In addition, I want to follow up on Mr. Shamir's comment with regards to the, when the data will come back with the air quality. Would this also include any of the particles that were obtained from private property? People said dust particles or some other types of materials landed on their cars or on their lawns. Is any of that being tested, tested, or is this just the air quality itself?
So this is strictly the air quality monitoring devices that were put up that you're going to receive a report, a report back on? I know several residents were inclined not to provide that to city, but to do it independently, which I fully support. They want to do their own independent analysis, which is fine. I would have to defer to A.L.R.G., and I can ask him that question if they're going to do any of that. As far as I know at this point, I'm not aware that they're doing it, but I can certainly inquire about that.
Yeah, I, I think it would, I think it would go a long way in answering some of those questions if we can get the answers to that as well, too. But it's good news about the air quality. Thank you. All right, seeing if there's no other questions for the mayor. We're going to move on to the council president report. Obviously, Mrs. Fenderbosh is not here tonight. She is under the weather. However, she did provide some notes that she wanted to be mentioned. The next collective committee meeting will be Tuesday, January the twenty-first, at seven P M., which is a change. It will not be a week from today, Monday. This is due to the Martin Luther King holiday, so there will be no Monday evening meeting. The next meeting of council will be January the twenty-seventh, Monday, January the twenty-seventh, at seven P M. Also, I have a note here that the routine website maintenance scheduled for yesterday has been rescheduled for Tuesday, January the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, starting at ten P M. and running through five A M. Wednesday morning. During this time, avonlake.org will be inaccessible. So if you're trying to access the city website tomorrow between ten P M. and five A M. the next morning, you will be unable to do so. Are there any questions for the council president? Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. I missed, when, when did you say the next C C M. is?
Will be Tuesday, January twenty-first.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to the director reports. We're going to start first with the finance director report. Ms. Crossy, would you like to put forth your report if you have one?
Thank you. I don't have anything this evening, but we are wrapping up the year, so we hope to have a report soon.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for the finance director? Seeing none. We'll move on now to the law director report. Mr. Ebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to follow up on two items concerning what the mayor has indicated. I received a taxpayer's demand back in August. It was responded to in writing, which I always do to Mr. Phillips when he does respond to me. I also received one January, January sixth, January fourth, and responded in January sixth for a second taxpayer demand, responding to his request for one. And then I received today an email from Mr. Phillips, dated January thirteenth, for another taxpayer's demand concerning the minutes of council. I will be responding in writing this week on that. I didn't have time today because I was in labor negotiations most of the day. But I did want to indicate that the records clerk of the city, when she was hired, she's a part-time employee. She spends about twenty-four to twenty-six hours per week doing nothing but records, and she keeps a voluminous, now a chart, unbelievable, of every record goes out. So we've been trying to have all our records requests go through her, so we keep an accurate record and accurate accounting of whom, when, was received and when it's responded to. Just an FYI concerning that. Also, I would like to, we received from the Ohio Municipal League, action needed to prevent the A.T. and T tariff revision from taking effect. I think everyone got a copy of this in the mail. What this is, and it's just the first of May to follow, if they're allowed to do that. The revision require any governmental entity requesting relocation of underground communications facilities or utilities to be paid by the city. This is only a first. It could come from First Energy, Columbia Gas, any of the ones that could be coming forward, you know, from that. So we are going to, I did respond to Ohio Municipal League today that we will be joining in. They wanted something in writing by tomorrow. I gave them an email this afternoon that we will be responding. There'll be a resolution supporting this effort to stop this at the next council meeting. So everyone will see the resolution. You should have got more information concerning this from Ohio Municipal League today. But all utility companies will be next in line if that's allowed to go forward. I think that is it, so thank you.
Are there any questions for the law director? Ms. Gentry?
Mr. Ebert, do you have a number of emails requested? I know somebody had mentioned a quantity. It was on the order of something like sixty-six thousand.
That was the one that requested through the email that we had.
The sixty-six thousand were a result of five separate email requests for email information. Each one of those yield over fifteen thousand documents, just those five. But we have hundreds of actual requests for documents.
Okay, thank you.
And like I said, we're trying to coordinate all through the records clerk. She was on vacation for two weeks. We did respond to some of them during that period of time that we could get, gather. This is, this way, we have everything centrally located, because the various directors may have emails that duplicate something that somebody else has. So we're trying to streamline it and make it more, and she keeps a great chart of everything that comes in, everything that goes out. So thank you.
All right, moving on to the public works director report. Mr. Liskovic?
Yeah, good evening. I just have a handful of updates this evening. First off, we're about halfway through our Christmas tree collection. It was noted, it's the first two full weeks of January. So crews have been out collecting those that have been set out by the residents. Again, as a reminder, just be void of all ornaments and lights and decorations and stuff like that for collection. Related to trees, public works staff is going to be conducting annual street tree pruning. That's going to start up probably later this week. We're going to be working the area bordered east and west by eighty-three and Jaycocks and north and south of Lake and Walker. Crews have already placed preemptive signage on streets, and those, the signage will be rotating through the different sections about a week ahead of actual work being done. Next up, just a real quick update on city hall reconstruction. Right, right around the beginning of the holiday season, Surf Row had a reassignment of staffing that occurred, and I have been in contact with them, and I have a meeting with the project manager tomorrow to get a timeframe for completion and any other updates on that project there. Next on my list is just an additional, some additional information on Alps. I know the mayor had covered the face, the news of phase two, but last week, we had a pre-construction meeting with R N H Concrete and Foundations, where we talked about the phase-one project that'll be happening here soon. They provided us with a construction schedule that kicks, kicks off in mid to late February with completion by the April eighteenth date that was included with the contract. And my last update for this evening revolves around the letters of interest that were submitted for the traffic study. We have received letters of interest from four different firms, and we are currently in the process of revealing those letters of interest, and we look forward to making a selection this week, which will then lead into a request for proposals from, from that selected vendor. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Liskovic. We'll start with Mr. Smith. Questions?
Yes, Mr. Liskovic, when I came in for the Human Resources Committee meeting, I had to put the lock over again on the front door, so it wasn't working again. I don't, I don't know what's, what's going on with that, but I was told it was working. It's not working, but that's important that we have that working.
Sure, sure. And as earlier, earlier today, I had reached out to Mary Krupar, who had been delegated that prior to my turn as director. She is, is in the process of making me an administrator so that I can delve into that a little bit deeper and hopefully find some resolutions for that. So I appreciate you providing that feedback.
Any other questions for, for the public works director? I do have one, Mr. Liskovic. So talking about the traffic study and how the selection is going to be made with the, with the firm that's going to be conducting that. When that choice is made by the administration, Mayor, you can chime in on this as well, too. Do you see that, that company then coming to public, the public service committee for discussion? I think that there would be an interest from the committee, once you all make your recommendation for committee and council to, to talk with them in a setting, and I think that the residents probably also would, you know, if they could be in attendance, I think that there's interest in that, at that step of the process. So I don't know who wants to, who wants to take that one.
I would, I would say that would make sense throughout this whole process, because obviously, you know, citizen feedback is important for, for the review of the whole area that we're going to be studying. So, and I would, I, it would make sense, I think, that would go to the public safety committee, correct?
We've been kind of going back and forth between public safety and public service. I think this, me and Mrs. Fenderbosh could even do a joint meeting on that, but.
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea. Obviously, there's great interest in this, and I think the residents who have spoken before, I think it'd be good for our, this firm to hear that, so as they develop their plan, that they can incorporate a lot of those things into it.
Great. So if you'll keep us informed, and I'll talk with Mrs. Fenderbosh about that as well, too. Okay, thank you. All right, now we are going to go to standing committees, and the first committee that we have is the Building and Utilities Committee. Ms. Gentry, please.
Yes, our next meeting will be this Wednesday at six P M. in council chambers. We'll be reviewing the, the STAR program demolition ordinance and the connection of the stormwater. And I also wanted to let everyone know that we did receive a NOPEC grant this week for sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars for this year.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Gentry? Mr. Zuber?
Do we have plans laid out for that sixty-seven thousand grant at this time, or are we still looking at things?
I'll, I'll kick off and turn it over to John. So this, these dollar amounts that we receive accumulate over time. We generally have two to three years to spend it. So I'll, I'll turn it over to John now, but we analyze the best way to use it. These funds come from the number of NOPEC customers that we have, so we like to give that back to the, to the taxpayers in some form or fashion. But, John, I'll turn it over to you. I know we have, we, we look at different projects, but we haven't ironed out this recent one yet.
Yeah, with, obviously, with all these funds coming in from NOPEC, it's all geared towards, you know, energy efficiencies and improvements and stuff like that. As example, for projects that we endeavored last year were HVAC replacements through various buildings, lighting upgrades. They've added a couple of different other eligible items that, that were new for me this year that weren't on the list last year. So we're going to probably explore just to see what those look like, and, and we'll be able to put a better plan together this year to, you know, best utilize those funds. So I've been looking at that. Once the award was shared with us, I think it was end of last week, that, that was announced to us, so more to come on that.
And I would just add that we're also, for this year's money, we're looking at street light L E D improvements in the Lear Road area and, and the Jaycocks area.
Great. All right, the next committee is the Communication, Environmental, and Recreation Programming. Mr. Shamir?
The next Communication, Environmental, and Recreational Program and Committee meeting is going to be on Monday, January twenty-seventh, at six P M. Items on, that will be discussed will be Alps schedule, so that's the Avon Lake Play Space, review of the implosion air quality, and H C W Avon landfill closure discussion.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shamir? Seeing none. The next committee is the Economic Development Committee. Mr. Arnold is not here. Are there any questions regarding the Economic Development Committee? Seeing none. The next committee is the Finance Committee. Mr. Zuber?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met last week, the Finance Committee did, here in the council chambers. We had several items, and we have several items on the agenda this evening. First item is the bank depository. Every five years, we have to pass an ordinance declaring certain banks as the banks we're going to use the deposit funds in. As I said, that passed out of the committee three to zero. It is on the agenda for passage tonight. We also talked about a grant for bullpoo vests for the police department. That's also on the agenda, but Mr. Koss will be handling that. We had a discussion on the capital budget and the budget in general, but more so the capital budget on different things that we're looking at, as the finance director said that she's putting together the end-of-the-year numbers. So we will have an update on what we have on the carryover to be able to move forward on that. I think we all received an email on the, we're looking to have a budget first reading next month and passage by the end of February, at the second meeting in February. We also had a discussion on the fire truck and the culverts. Those are two big items that we're looking to do this year. We will have further discussion on both of those as we get further into the capital budget. of those as we get further into the capital budget. We talked a little bit about the new fire station. There's going to be much more to come on that shortly. I know Mr. Cause is going to talk about it in his meeting tomorrow evening. We also have the renewal levy of a one and a half million or 1.5 mil operating levy for the city collects about a million a year. We need to go to the auditor to get information from him before we can pass the resolution and put it on the ballot. That's also up for passage to get the information from the auditor we need. Also, on the meeting for this evening for passage is the ACH transactions, naming our finance, our new Finance Director as except being able to accept those from the county auditor and treasurer. We talked a little bit about the 2023 audit reports, why the extensions were, and it's all because of the state auditor needing an extensions to do it. It wasn't from the citizens or the the city of Avon Lake creating any issue. It was the auditors and the amount of audits that they have and the backups that they have. We have an amended appropriations. There's two components of this. There's amendment on the temporary budget that we have to do because of the water and sewer funds that were created. So we have to amend the appropriation and move those funds. And then we have to also update the temporary budget to show the move all of those funds. So there's two pieces of legislation for that. And then we also had a discussion on the City Hall construction update, which Mr. Liskovic did. Our next meeting will be the first Monday in February.
Thank you, Mr. Zubor. Are there any questions for Mr. Zubor on Finance Committee? All right, seeing none, we will move on down to the Human Resources Committee. Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much. The Human Resources Committee met prior to this meeting this evening at 6 o'clock. We did discuss Fire Marshal McKay. That affected January 1st. He was no longer the Fire Marshal. So there's some legislation there fixing that on this evening's agenda. We also discussed the United Steelworkers Local 836, 836-1 contracts, which were agreed to. And the, they're also known as AFLCIO, CLC Local 36 or 836. Those are both on, all those are on tonight for suspension of the rules and as emergencies. Civil Service Commission updates were also discussed at that meeting. I think important for the civil service is that there is going to be a dispatcher records clerk exam on January 29, 2025 at 6:00 PM at the Avon Lake Library. We're also are going to add to the agenda the accepting the resignation of firefighter paramedic John Nackle, which the mayor addressed. There were also in civil service, some folks that got jobs, so they're removed from the eligibility list, both in the Fire Department and the Police Department. I think that's all I had, except I would ask that maybe the Human Resources Director could give some highlights or some discussion of what happened, what's the, what's going on with the contracts so council's aware of it. It was approved with the USW.
Thank you. Summary of the changes was provided by email to council just a few minutes ago. So sorry about the last minute on that. I have printout copies if you prefer. Offered to the two unions, 836 and 836, one whose contracts basically mirror each other, include the increase in annual clothing allowance from $650 a year to $750, increase in longevity pay for years 21 through 25 at $100 per year, creation of a new clause limiting, limiting the number of members allowed to be on leave at one time to 10 members or four members during the month of November for leave season. We agreed on a 3%, 3%, 3% increase with no equity adjustment, 3% each for the next three years when the contract will extend through 2027, addition of a reimbursement for achievement of Class A or Class B CDL licenses as approved by the Public Works Director, new section defining what a probationary term is for new employees, which is 12 months, allowance to accrue compensatory time on a rolling basis, and other clarification language in retirement sick payout, grammatical errors, and incorporation of an MOU that is now part of the contract.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just one, Mr. Smith. We, just enough, the FOP was, we met today with the FOP. It considerably got through most of it. We just got a couple items. We got to reschedule another meeting, but we're close to it finalized. Now be the last contract that we have then.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith and HR? All right, seeing none. The next committee is the Public Safety and Health Committee, and I am the chair of that. Tomorrow, the next Public Safety and Health Committee meeting will be tomorrow, January 14 at 5:30 PM here in these Council Chambers. The agenda has been published. And again, we will be at 5:30 tomorrow. I do have one item on the agenda that I want to talk specifically about in my report, and that is going to be the appointment of Ms. Michaela Highland to the Lorraine County Board of Health. And I'd like to use my report portion of this meeting to introduce Michaela to City Council, to the administration and to the community. Also in the audience is the Director of Lorraine County Board of Health, Mark Adams. So I'd like to ask the both of them to come forward. If that's all right. And before they speak, I want to go into a little background on how we got to this point. Some years back, at least before 2016, the city of Avon Lake contracted with the city of Lorraine as our Board of Health. We do not obviously have our own here in the city. And so we contracted with the city of Lorraine. When the city of Lorraine was going to disband their Board of Health, the city of Avon Lake had determined where we would look to go for those services. And we had a number of public meetings and discussions and a lot of back and forth and a lot of really good positive things that came out of that. But what ended up happening was we did join the Lorraine County Board of Health. And one of the things that was established was that the Lorraine County Board of Health put together a citizens board, which the communities that were a part of this board would be able to elect or select a representative to represent those areas. And this, the person that had been serving in that position, I believe since inception, was Mr. Ed McNamara. And Mr. McNamara served very honorably, and we thank him for his time on the board. But he has to step down, which now makes this appointment necessary. One thing I will mention when we introduce Michaela here, and we'll hear from Mr. Adams as well, too, is that this selection, she doesn't just represent the city of Avon Lake. She would also be representing the city of Sheffield Lake and the city of Avon. Both their mayors also concur with the selection of Michaela. So I think it goes a long way to show that all three cities are supporting the selection of Michaela. So Michaela, if you'd like to start, I, you know, we'd love to hear about you. If you can just give us a couple of minutes on your background and your interest in this position. Come on forward.
Hi. So, so nice to meet all of you. I am a lifelong Avon Lake resident. I have been here, you know, since I was a child. And I am raising my family here now, which is why I have particular interest in this role. I care a lot about our community health and well-being, especially in terms of children and, you know, that population. I actually own a business in the city, Reflection Room. I'm a medical tattoo artist. I work a lot with medical professionals and various healthcare providers in this area, in Avon and Sheffield as well, are some of my referral partners that I've worked with. So I care a lot about the communities since I work closely with that community. I am currently a student at Case Western Reserve. I am graduating next semester with my master's in bioethics and medical humanities. And I'm also a master's of public health students at Brown University. I attend online and I do some hybrid component work going to Rhode Island for that as well. But I will be wrapping that up in the fall or spring, depending. So, yeah, that's a little bit about me. I'm not sure if you have any questions regarding my background or anything.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Michaela? Thank you, Michaela. You could stay up here just in case.
Okay.
Mr. Adams, would you be able to talk to us? And it's always a good refreshers, especially since we have some newer members of City Council and even for those that have been here for a while, it's always a good thing. Could you just kind of refresh us of what the importance of the board and how they work with the Lorraine County Board of Health and our selected members and helping to guide the decisions and the direction of the Lorraine County Board of Health, if you don't mind?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Council, Mayor. So the board, just as you had mentioned before, that it's that citizens board. So it is a 10-member board. There are five city members and then four county members and then one district licensing council. Just briefly, Lorraine City, Liria City, North Ridgeville have each appoint a member. And then the shared members are Oberlin, Amherst, and then Sheffield Lake, Avon, Avon Lake. And then the townships appoint four other members to the board. And then there is a district licensing committee. So that is a committee that was appointed. Those members of that committee were appointed by the District Advisory Committee, which is made up of all the mayors, village and city mayors, and township trustees, and then the president or the, the county, county commissioners, president. And they get together each year and they, in March, and they vote on those, on those members. Well, they put together the district licensing council and they get to pick a member as well. And that council is made up of people that are licensed by the Board of Health. So it was a law that came out about 25 years ago. And so that person is Mr. Tom Estruth. He owns a landfill. So that's, that gets licensed by the Health Department. So that way, those people that are licensed by the Health Department have a say as well. So it's truly, it's a member board. So you are also one that, and I've tried to, as much as possible, have two doctors, have two people that are licensed as much as possible. So that way, there's, you never have the absence of one. So that way, if we lost Mr. Estruth, we'd still have somebody that's a licensed person that would be, to be able to talk about things that are, especially in that licensing community. So the Board of Health is this quasi legislative body that has the ability to, if they have to pass any resolutions or anything, which are very similar to ordinances, to be able to make sure that the, the projects that we put forth in Health Department, we look at the community health assessment. And if we say, okay, we have diabetes, heart disease, all these chronic diseases, what are we doing as the health administration to be able to curtail that, to get information out, to be able to put programs together, to be able to stop that, to reduce the amount of, maybe if it's infection of something. Well, the board, then kind of their job is to hold my feet to the fire, to make sure that the plans that we put forth are actually going to do good in the community and do something and be of value. That's their one major function. The other major, they have two major functions, the second one being a fiscal responsibility. So while I may be the administrator of it, this 10-member citizens board looks at those, at the budget that I put together and the programming to make sure that it's a sound budget, very similar to what councils look like and what they do when, if a mayor puts together a budget, whatever it may be, however it's, however the government's set up. Health Department kind of does that very same thing. We have the committees. And so they make sure that I'm doing my job right.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Adams? Seeing none. I also mentioned to Michaela yesterday when I talked to her on the phone that the Public Safety and Health Committee, for probably far too long, has been too much focused just on the public safety aspect. I know we bring Mr. Adams in once a year to brief the, the City Council and the community, and we'll continue to do that. But I let Michaela know that there's an open seat at the table. So if any issues ever come through the board that you want to bring to our attention that affect Avon Lake or the county or that you deem important enough, just contact me and you will have an open slot on, on our monthly agenda meetings that you can have that time to inform the community. So, okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. The next committee that we have is the Public Service Committee. I am the only member here of the three-member committee. We do have one item on that agenda, and that will be up for second reading. It's the ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a personal service contract agreement for environmental consulting services and declaring an emergency. I will be asking for suspension of the rule and passage of that tonight. And prior to this meeting, I did speak to Mr. Liskovic, and he is going to speak to that at the appropriate time. Are there any questions regarding the Public Service Committee? Seeing none, we will now move on to the Planning Commission. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Planning Commission met on January 7 at 7 o'clock here in Council Chambers. I administered the oath to Scott Orelli for another term that expires, I think, in 2029, actually. And at the meeting, the only agenda item on there was the Alps, which was approved seven to nothing without inclusion of anything relative to the north parking lot. There was also some text changes discussed relative to the zoning code. And that's just a work in progress at this point. So that, that's all I have to report on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith and Planning Commission? Next, we have the Zoning Board. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. The next Zoning Board of Appeals will meet on January 22. And there are currently two cases on the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for zoning? We'll be on. Next, we have the Park and Rec Committee. Mr. Shamir?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Shamir. Any questions for Park and Rec? I do have one, Mr. Mayor. I know, I understand that we have a vacancy or two on that committee. What, do you have a specific deadline of when you're looking to fill that? I know that they have to be Ward Three and Ward Four.
So we are currently taking applications. We have seen, received several. It's open for now. We're going to be taking a look at those. And it does break down such that we're covering the whole city by ward. So we have to look at that in conjunction with who's applying to make sure that they're in one of those wards. So that's an ongoing process. But we encourage anybody at this point, if they have an interest in the Parks and Rec Commission, we'd love to hear from you.
Great. Thank you very much. So it's safe to say that if a resident lives in Ward Three or Ward Four and wants to be considered for that, that they can submit their letter of interest and their resume to City Hall to Mrs. Ross Maron?
Yep.
Do we have that on the city website? Or can we get it on there?
It is on there.
It's on there.
Great. Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Now we have our special committee reports. Are there any special committee reports? No, seeing none. Next, we will move on to audience participation. This is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any item on the agenda. You will have up to three minutes. And there will be an additional opportunity at the end of this meeting to speak on any item regarding the city of Avon Lake. And that will be up to five minutes. Please note that any questions asked of the administration or council, their answers may count against your time. So first up, we could just have name and the city that you live, sir.
Gerald Phillips, concerned citizen of Avon Lake. First of all, to the residents and citizens of Avon Lake, I encourage you to watch the programs on ALCTV about the Brownfield Committee, the tax increment financing, the TIF, the implosions, the interim development agreement, and the last two about local government responsibilities and the qualities that the members of council should have, plus other officials. They need to have openness, impartiality, honesty, integrity, and transparency. I want to talk about ordinance 24194. It's an ordinance dealing with HZW. What's disturbing about this is this is similar to the Verdantis contract, where we're approving a contract for services already done. Approving a contract for services already done. Look at page two of ordinance 2490, 194. During the contract period, invoicing period, HZW has performed. Go through that. This is for work done in December 2023, all the way to December 2024. Why are we approving a contract post facto after the service of render? That's not how government financing occurs. That's not how government financing occurs. That's not. You get the contract approved to authorize them to do the service, not after the fact. I like to know if there was a warrant issue, okay, by the finance director authorizing these services while they're being performed. You have to issue a warrant. What, you're going to issue a warrant post facto? Post facto? I mean, go on, read it. It goes on to page three. That's not in conformity with generally acceptable government procedures. It's not acceptable for control. And I'm sure your auditor would like to know that this is being done again. So, you know, do the right thing, follow the right steps, you know, approve a contract, then have them do the work, not after the fact. Technically, technically, HZW isn't entitled to that work. He performed that work pro bono generously, and he can't get paid. So, you're just correcting a screw-up that this city has done. It's not the first one. Verdantis, and there's probably others. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Name and city, please.
I don't have to give the city. I live in... It's part of Robert's rules. My name's William Zimmerman. Which, when you say that there'll be opportunities, otherwise, that's a violation of Robert rules again. Ongoing issues. I'd also like to speak about 24-194. So, my first question is, even though Mr. Phillips was able to decipher who this company was and everything, nowhere on it does it say who the firm is. Says personal services agreement for environmental consultant services and declaring an emergency. Doesn't say the name of the company. Doesn't tell me who these people are. I don't know what they do for a living. It could be Beth's company. I don't believe that, but it could be. My point is, is that somehow, some way, you guys have neglected to say who the firm is. Now, from my standpoint, they shouldn't be getting paid, because we don't know who we're paying. We don't know if they did the work. I don't understand how you make an error like this. People are supposed to be doing their job. It doesn't appear so. We make records requests. I guess I should have requested who the company was. Then maybe we all would know. I don't believe that this can pass tonight, even on an emergency basis. It should be tabled until you find out who the company is and disclose it to the citizens of the city. There's no reason this should move forward. Zero. Somebody hasn't done their job again in the city of Avon Lake. It's amazing. This occurs. I would think at some point, somebody would find these things and be able to fix it in advance of the meeting. If you were going for trial before a judge, you'd make sure you had all your i's dotted and t's crossed. There wouldn't be a question about it. To me, this is ignorance, stupidity, total lack of integrity. At some point, you need to be held accountable.
Mr. Zuber?
Just in regards to Mr. Zuber's comment, I refer to Section Two of Ordinance Number 24-194, that said agreement shall state in its terms that the cost sale of said personal services shall not exceed $68,200 upon receipt of itemized billing and the performance within the guidance and scope of set force in agreement to the satisfaction of public works director. The finance director is hereby directed to deliver to HZW Environmental Consulting Consultants LLC the warrant of this city in the amount due and payable, and cause said warrant is to be paid. So, there is a, there is a company named in Section Two that we shall pay.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Zuber. I think we all looked at it and saw the same thing. I thank you for bringing it up. Thank you. All right. Now, we will move... Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Shamir, go ahead, please.
Also, within Section One, I think HZW is mentioned, and the location mentor, Ohio, is also specified. And I think, if I am not mistaken, if I may, Mr. Liskovic, this is scope of work that is to be done in 2025? Is that correct?
Yes, it is correct. They outline work that was performed previous, or actually current, well, not current, 2024 work that was done as an example, and then they're outlining the 2025 work to be done.
So, if I may be, if I can just get clarification. So, this is work that is going to carry us through until the end of 2025?
I've looked at it numerous times, and with the revisions and stuff like that, I just wouldn't like to verify.
Because that's one of the questions I had during the last time.
Now, so right now, it goes through not quite the end of 2025. And I know you'd asked that question prior to. And I will just throw it out there that the setup that we see in front of us, and right or wrong, has been what the setup has been for a number of years. I've gone back through some of the history, so gathering some of the other pieces, and it has been the same process through time with the city.
The reason I'm asking, the reason I made the comment the first time is that if we have a contract that carries us from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, as it pertains to the municipal landfill closure, that then removes any potential issues for the year. And that's the reason. I mean, if we can just have the contract as an annual contract to manage, that way, that if there's anything else in the next year, there is an annual contract that can be dealt with, and it doesn't roll from one year to the next year, and it's budgeted annually.
Right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Let me go to the law director first, okay?
Mr. Shamir, it does say in the contract, before the quartile exposure, post-closure inspection through September of 25, September of 25.
No, it goes to September, but if there are issues...
Issues after that.
After that. So, when the reports come out, what happens, what happened this past year is the reports came out, and there needed to be a response to that report. So, if we can have an MSA that carries us from the beginning of the year and includes any potential engineering and consulting services that would respond to any EPA comments, that would close out, and it would eliminate any problems in the future.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah. Thank you. If you read the first page of the document, the last line says the current contract period was through 2024, and it was during this period, if you go on to the next page, which Mr. Phillips talked all about, it's during this period that all those things happened. It's things that they've done in the past that they got paid for. It's not anything that's being paid retroactive. Thank you.
Ms. Gentry. All right. Yeah, I appreciate the clarification that the company's name is listed twice in the ordinance and that some of the other issues that were mentioned are not as they appeared to be stated. So, let's move on to motions. Are there any additions or deletions to the motions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I would like to add to the agenda a motion to accept the resignation of firefighter paramedic John Nakle due to his retirement effective January 13th, 2025 at 7:00 a.m.
Are there any, are there any discussion on adding the motion? Any discussion on adding the motion? If there is none, Mrs. Rossmarin, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
The motion has been added. Mr. Smith, we will take care of that one after Mr. Shamir's motion.
Thank you.
First motion, Mr. Shamir?
I move to authorize the mayor to review, to renew the lease agreement with Avon Lake Public Library for one year to use the library's office space on the lower level for the Avon Lake Cable Studios and Communications and Technology Department.
Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Ebert, would you like to...
Yes. This is the second year of a five-year lease agreement. The amount we paid last year, it's 5% utilities, is paid with $3,000. So, you're looking at approximately the same amount.
And all I've got to say, that's a great deal. So...
Mr. Zuber?
Just that we've been doing this for 30 years now.
There's no other comments. Mrs. Rossmarin, call the roll.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Next motion, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I move to accept the resignation of firefighter paramedic John Nakle due to his retirement effective January 13th, 2025 at 7:00 a.m.
Discussion on the motion?
The mayor covered it in his report. He has put in his retirement, and this is a perfunctory function by council to accept it. Thank you.
Any further comments on this motion? Seeing none. Mrs. Rossmarin, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Great. Now, we come to the legislation portion of the meeting. We'll start with the second readings, and I have the first piece, and I move... We're supposed to read by title first. I was doing really good there for a while. Mrs. Rossmarin, please read ordinance Number 24-194 by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a personal services agreement for environmental consultant services and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the council rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
I move for passage of ordinance Number 24-194. And in discussion, we just had a number of comments about this piece of legislation and the contract attached. I don't know, Mr. Liskovic, did you want to add anything additional to this?
I mean, you know, essentially, this is, it is part of our post-closure process that we need, you know, have been, has been determined by Ohio EPA that we have to go through, which revolves around monitoring of explosive gases and the groundwater. So, it's a reoccurring process that we do on a yearly basis with them.
Thank you. Any other discussions on this piece of legislation? Mr. Shamir?
The only comment that I've got is, is to ensure that the contract goes for the full year. That way, that the areas that we discussed are covered, and HZW is attending next week's CERP meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Two weeks, but in two weeks.
In two weeks, yes, in two weeks' time. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional? Mrs. Rossmarin, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Next, we come to first readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, will you please read by title only ordinance Number 25-1?
An ordinance providing for the designation of U.S. Bank, Fifth Third Bank, Huntington National Bank, and First Federal Lakewood as public depositories of the city and awarding the deposit of active funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of council rule requiring three readings. Call the roll.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance Number 25-1.
Discussion.
As I say to my report from the Finance Committee, this has to be done every five years, passing the ordinance, giving these banks as our depositories.
Are there any other comments on ordinance Number 25-1? Seeing none. Mrs. Rossmarin, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
The ordinance passes. Next, we have Resolution Number 25-2. Mrs. Rossmarin, please read by title only Resolution 25-2.
A resolution requesting that the county auditor pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 57-05.03 certify to the city of Avon Lake the total current tax valuation of Avon Lake that has territory located in Lorraine County and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a 1.5 renewal levy for the operating expenses under Ohio Revised Code 57-05.191 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of Resolution 25-2.
Discussion.
This is requesting from the auditor the information we need in order to send the renewal of our tax levy. As I said, it's a renewal of a 1.5 mil levy, collects about a million dollars a year, so that we can get it to the voters for renewal in May.
Thank you. Are there any other discussions on this Resolution 25-2? Seeing none. Mrs. Rossmarin, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
The item passes. Next item is Resolution 25-3. Mrs. Rossmarin, please read by title Resolution 25-3.
A resolution authorizing the finance director to enter into an agreement with the Lorraine County Auditor and County Treasurer's Office for ACH and electronic transactions and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Move for passage of Resolution 25-3.
Discussion.
As stated in my report, this is the next item that gives our new finance director the ability to do ACH transactions with the county treasurer and the county auditor's office, and she has to be named personally.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution? Seeing none. Mrs. Rossmarin, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
The item passes. Next, we have ordinance Number 24-4. Mrs. Rossmarin, would you please read by title ordinance Number 24-4?
An ordinance to make amended temporary appropriations for the current and other expenditures of the city of Avon Lake for the fiscal year 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, call the roll.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance Number 24-4.
Discussion.
This amends the temporary appropriation to move the funds per the initial new funds that we did at our last regular meeting, creating them in the water and sewer department. This basically moves the money between those funds.
Thank you.
In the appropriation.
Are there any other comments on this ordinance number? Seeing none. Mrs. Rossmarin, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber? Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
The item passes. The next item is ordinance number 25-5. Mr. Zuber.
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
I apologize, Mr. Zuber. Mrs. Ross Maron, would you please read by title only ordinance number 25-5? Thank you.
An ordinance approving transfers of funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber.
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Ross Maron.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
I move for passage of ordinance number 25-5.
Discussion.
This is, now, we're transferring the money in between the funds that has been appropriated in the temporary appropriation of the prior ordinance that we passed.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this ordinance 25-5? Seeing none, Mrs. Ross Maron.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
The item passes. The next item is resolution number 25-6. Mrs. Ross Maron, would you please read by title only, resolution 25-6?
A resolution appointing Michaela Hyland as a city representative to the Lorain County Board of Health and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the council rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Ross Maron.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
I move for passage of resolution 25-6. And in discussion, we had the opportunity tonight, I think the community did, and members of council and the administration, to meet Michaela Hyland and also Director Adams as well, too. We've heard a little bit about her. We've received her resume previously. It's very impressive. And I think she's going to do an outstanding job serving the residents of Avon Lake as well as the residents of Avon and Sheffield Lake. So, Michaela, welcome aboard. Thank you for being willing to serve. Are there any other discussions on this resolution? Seeing none, Mrs. Ross Maron.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
The item passes. The next item that we have is resolution number 25-7. Mrs. Ross Maron, would you please read by title only, resolution 25-7?
A resolution accepting the Ohio Law Enforcement Bulletproof Vest Program Grant and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the council rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Ross Maron.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
I move for passage of resolution 25-7. And in discussion, in our packets, we see that we have, as a part of this grant that we'll be accepting here tonight, this is for 12 bulletproof vests through a state program. The total cost of the vest was $15,522.24 less the 25% match requirement, which was $3,880.56, for a total eligible reimbursement of $11,641.68. Bulletproof vests have to be changed out every few years, and this is a great program run by the state, which allows for a grant for our officers to receive the protection and the equipment that they need. I do want to note that just a month or so ago, at the Public Safety and Health Committee, we did pass another motion to apply for one of these grants. This is not that. So this is a previous one that was approved earlier this year, or earlier last year, I should say. So the one that we approved a couple of months ago, this is not that. That one, hopefully, we'll approve for that one as well, too. And that will be coming down the road here in a few months. So. Are there any discussions on the resolution? Seeing none, Mrs. Ross Maron.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
The item has passed. The next item that we have is ordinance number 24-8. Mrs. Ross Maron, please read by title only, ordinance 24-8.
An ordinance, amendin' ordinance number 22-115 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith.
And if I may, I'd like to make one notation. There's an edit. Section number one, we'll read that ordinance number 22-115 is hereby amended effective January 1st, 2025 as follows. The assertion of the date, January 1st, 2025.
Mr. Law Director, before we suspend, vote to suspend the rules, is that a small enough change that?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I move for suspension of the rules requiring three readings and to consider ordinance 25-8 with the text amendment.
It is 25-8, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Mrs. Ross Maron.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I move for passage. This was discussed in Human Resources this afternoon before this meeting, or I guess this evening. And it's my understanding that the position's going to be filled in that the effective date of the changes was January 1st, where Mr. McKay is no longer acting as the city's fire marshal.
Thank you. Are there any discussions on ordinance number 25-8? Seeing none, Mrs. Ross Maron, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
The item has passed. The next item is ordinance number 24-9. Mrs. Ross Maron, please read by title only, ordinance number 24-9.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a labor agreement with the United Steel, Paper and Forestry, Rubber Manufacturing, Energy, Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union, AFL-CIO and CLC Local 836, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Ross Maron, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. This was also discussed at our Human Resources meeting earlier today. I did ask during the Human Resources Report for the Human Resources Director to advise us regarding the changes to the contracts that were discussed, included an increase in annual clothing allowance from $650 to $750, increase in longevity pay for 21 to 25 years to $100 per year, a new clause limiting the number of members allowed to leave at one time to 10, or four members during the month of November. And the raises that are going to be going into effect are 3% raises for the next three years with no equity adjustment, reimbursement for the achievement of Class A or Class B CDLs, and a new section defined in probationary terms. There was an allowance for accrue compensatory time on a rolling basis, clarification of retirement sick payout, some grammatical corrections, and incorporation of a member's sick bank into the contract, which was formerly part of an MOU. Thank you. And that also will apply to the next piece of legislation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other discussion on ordinance number 25-9? Seeing none, Mrs. Ross Maron, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
The item has passed. The next item that we have is ordinance number 25-10. Mrs. Ross Maron, please read by title only, ordinance number 25-10.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a labor agreement with United Steel, Paper and Forestry, Rubber Manufacturing, Energy, Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union, AFL-CIO and CLC Local 836-1, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I move for the suspension of the rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Ross Maron, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I move for passage. I just ask that my comments be restated as if fully rewritten in the record relative to the previous ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from members of the council or the administration? Seeing none, Mrs. Ross Maron, please call the roll.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
The item has passed. Now we come to public input, and this is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak to any item pertaining to the city of Avon Lake. You will have five minutes. There...Please note that any questions asked to the administration or to council will count against your time. So if anybody in the audience would like to speak, come on up, name, city. Thank you very much.
General Phillips, Avon Lake. I want to talk about targeting residents and citizens who exercise their First Amendment right and speak out against the city. Want to talk about the selective enforcement by the city against citizens and residents who speak out against the city in exercising their First Amendment rights. I'd like to talk about the abuse of process of the legal system against residents and citizens who speak out in an attempt to exercise their First Amendment rights. You can't use the legal system for alternative purposes. You can't use it for character assassination. Can't use it to discredit residents and citizens. You can't use it to silence citizens and residents. Can't use it to intimidate. Intimidation, 292103, a criminal offense. 292105, retaliation, a criminal offense. I spoke about civil rights violations. I think I gave you all the course on Criminal Law 101. 292145, interfering with civil rights. Civil rights, the ability to come up here and speak. And just because the mayor doesn't like what I say, he can't use his head as the director of public safety, to use his police chief, to use the enforcement power of the city of Avon Lake to charge people frivolously, frivolously. Can't do that. That's why we have laws against that. I have a lawsuit when I'm suing the mayor, the law director, and his firm, the police chief, Officer Goodwin, Mr. Monroe, and I'm going to John Doe, members of council, just in case if any of you participated in this abuse of process. Through discovery, if I find out that somebody has, you'll be added to the lawsuit. Also, I'm going to John Doe, members of the Avon Lake Regional Water, in connection with any discovery, I find out that anybody over there participated. I have evidence. The mayor has leaked information to the Chronicle for the sole purpose to have public articles printed to discredit citizens and residents. We have the ALCTV, who never goes to Avon Lake Municipal Court, never, wasn't on their calendar. Coincidentally, they show up on January 8th for arraignment, where I'm present. Coincidentally, huh? Also, I get hate mail, hate mail. And the hate mail says, we're from the FOS, Friends of Spetzel, okay? Friends of Spetzel. Now, you may think that executive sessions are privileged, but they're not. They're not privileged. There's no statutory privilege like attorney-client, patient, physician. So everything you had in executive session is going to be discoverable. And also, Jeffrey Smith is an attorney. He knows you can waive a privilege if it exists, if it's spoken about, right, Jeff? If you speak to me about it, then you waive the privilege. So there's no privilege, Jeff. Let's talk about the fact of tampering with evidence, okay? Talk about tampering with evidence. I get served a complaint on December 19th, the day of the implosion, coincidentally, after I sent the mayor telling him that he's violating the law again by not giving a ticket with AL ERG. Coincidentally, I get a police officer at my house, okay, 9:30 on that day, after he gets, he gets that letter, which he doesn't like. So he retaliates, makes sure I get a ticket for disorderly conduct. I go to court, and in the file is another ticket for disorderly conduct. Unfortunately, they don't have the same offense on it. They don't have the same offense on it. Somebody altered a public document. That's called tampering with evidence, tampering with evidence. We're going to have a prosecutor from this city do that? No, I'm going to the sheriff, and I'm going to the prosecutor. And he's going to look into that, look into somebody tampering with evidence. Now, you may think you guys are above the law, but you're not.
Thank you. Anybody else?
William Zimmer. So earlier, the mayor read us a wonderful statement talking about frivolous actions that supposedly Mr. Phillips and I have given to the records people here at our wonderful city. Nothing is frivolous if you're gaining knowledge. And that's the most important thing, is we're gaining knowledge. That's how we found out about the Brownfield Committee and the fact that they didn't keep minutes, and that they didn't post their meetings, and weren't open to the public. That's how we gain knowledge. If you watch our show Concerned Citizens on ALCTV, we'll be able to educate you about what's going on in our city. Spend a few moments watching them. There's going to be two more that'll come out on Wednesday, and there'll be a total of six now on ALCTV for you to view. We're trying to educate the city, citizens. Now, we talk about Mr. Phillips there, talking about the fact that he's received two different tickets for the same offense. I find that rather unusual. I was actually on the phone with Mr. Phillips when the police officer arrived at his house to give him the first ticket. Which, if you look closely, it has an Ohio Revised Code number, not an Avon Lake. But magically, when he shows up for court, it has an Avon Lake code, not an Ohio Revised Code. As he indicates, he believes that there's been tampering of the evidence. It's a third-degree felony. People I've spoke to said somebody in the police department had to do it. And as you know, I believe the police department's dirty. They have been for years. And when I had an issue here in the city about that, I came to you. And you told me to be quiet. Don't talk about it. Because you didn't want it to be released, to get it out there. Because you were trying to get us 25,000 city population to be the safest in Ohio. That was more important than talking about a woman who was raped in our city. That's why you're no integrity. Violate your oath of office every time you sit in one of these chairs, just like many of you. You have no trouble doing that because you don't have integrity. Somebody will find out who did this to the two tickets. Because this is criminal. Just like I've said so many other things of dereliction of duty have been criminal. And we still tend to pursue them on y'all. Because that's the right we have. them on y'all. Because that's what the right we have. I got a police chief who talks with his old detective sergeant. Says, you take the meeting. We show up, he takes the meeting. Says the chief's on vacation. And I have a meeting with the chief, and the chief has never told me he was on vacation. I spent 10 minutes there, turned around, left, called back up to the police station, asked to speak to the chief. Guess who answered the phone? The chief. Orchestrated? Did they know in advance? Was there collusion? Yet to be determined. So, again, I'll say, please watch Concerned Citizens. It's an educational show about our city. Will help you understand what's going on. At some point, y'all are going to get caught.
Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Come on up, sir.
I would.
Name and city, please, sir.
Sure. Dr. Kenneth Remy from Avon Lake. Wanted to make an announcement about an event coming up in the city next month, and hopefully engage members of the city. Been fortunate enough to speak with the mayor and the council president. So, I moved here about three years ago. I have a sense of experience in both federal, state, and local government from the state that I came from, but I'm going to tell you something totally different. On February 17, at 7 o'clock at Avon Lake High School, we're going to have a community event with the Harlem Wizards basketball team that's going to engage our community to raise funds for our school athletics, for our school activities here at our Avon Lake schools. And the concept is that we're going to build community by building our small businesses, who hopefully will sponsor towards this event, will drive new business, so people will continue to buy local, to keep our local businesses, over 300 of them within the municipality in business. And furthermore, we'll support our students. We'll have a game against community members, teachers, other members of the community. The game is actually inclusive also of our two parochial schools that our children in the city also attend, who will also have some teachers into that event as well. And we're always looking for people that are civic-minded that would like to participate prior to the game, starting at 7 o'clock. We will have a community event where members of the community, businesses that are sponsoring this event, will be able to interact with the community, have activities for the kids that come through. We'll be able to tell a little bit about their business, tell a little bit about activities that might be coming through the city. It's really a great way, in my view, to build community centered around our businesses, around our schools, and around our civic leaders. Hope you guys can participate. Feel free to reach out. The mayor has my information, and we're looking forward to having your participation. Thank you all.
Could you say the date?
February 17, Avon Lake High School. Over 1,000 tickets to be sold. We hope to sell every one of those.
Thank you, Dr. Remy.
You got it.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak this evening? Seeing none. Next, we have miscellaneous business and announcements. Does anybody have any miscellaneous business announcements? I have one. I have the numbers in from the 2024 Toys for Tots campaign here in Lorain County, and I wanted to share those with the community. I know there's been, our community always is so generous at that time of the year to include members here in this room as well, too. The Lorain County Toys for Tots distributed 21,218 toys in 2024 at the holiday season, which is just an incredible amount, and we were able to support and serve 5,379 Lorain County children. And as I always state, every toy, every dollar that is donated to Lorain County Toys for Tots stays in Lorain County. So, again, thank you all very much. These numbers are humbling because it shows what a great need that there is in the community. But as we always do, residents of Avon Lake and the county stepped up to help. So, thank you to the community. If there is nothing else, there's going to be a need for an executive session tonight. Mr. Zuber.
I move to adjourn to executive session in compliance with Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G2 to discuss sale, purchase, and lease of property.
We're going to go, before we vote on it, Mr. Ebert?
Yes, I'd like to also include Rob Monroe and his team here. Mr. Monroe, could you tell who all is going to be in the executive session, please?
Avon Lake Regional Water, their legal counsel, legal counsel for Lorain County, and representative from Rattellis.
Okay.
And who did we want from this body? All elected officials, Mr. Ebert and the Finance Director?
Correct.
Is that it?
Hmm.
Mrs. Rossmarin?
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
We're going to go into an executive session. When we come back out, there will be no other official business that is going to be taken. There will be no votes. We will reconvene and then promptly adjourn. So, there'll be no other action taken this evening. Thank you.